When do you think it's going to go to committee for discussion?
They start noticing committee bills this week for next week. So on Thursday, or Friday, they will start announcing, okay, on Monday, this is the agenda for the whole House. On one day, they'll announce what the Senate is going to do. Because of the weekend and because of Good Friday, I'm not quite sure. The Senate has a three-day rule, the House has a two-day rule. So when does that come out? Over the weekend was last week's for Monday and Tuesday.
Do we know if we have any local representatives on these committees?
I'm pretty sure the answer is no.
And then I guess my last question is, are we directing this letter to show a priority, first to carve out an exception to the statute? And if that doesn't work, then as an alternate, get the extension time that Jake talked about?
That was how I made the motion.
Okay.
Get us out of it. If not, give us time.
Awesome. Thanks.
David?
One last thing. I don't know what's been protocol in the past, but I mean, I think the best, one of the best people that can make the case is Etheridge. Is there any prohibition or issue with allowing him to testify in front of committee?
No, not at all.
I mean, because I think it's important for the legislators to know both sides of this, right? Because there's certainly going to be advocacy for it.
If they would allow that, that would be great.
Sure. A committee is open to anyone to speak when the bill's presented. So you just got to fill out the form. And I don't have a problem with him advocating for him and his team and sharing some of the concerns he has.
And I don't have a problem with that either. I will tell you that all of my discussions with my, the folks that I've been trying to work with in Tallahassee have told me that if they're not hearing that our council wants something changed, then they're not going to change anything on their own.
Yeah. And to add to that, you know, if we want to change the bill, it's really going to come from our local delegation. As a member up there, if I had, if I didn't have the delegation saying it's a problem for them, I would just ignore it. But if the delegation is saying, hey, we want to change this, it's going to get a lot more credibility. So I'm okay, as an individual council member, allowing George to send him up and make his case in front of the committee.
And I think both would be effective.
Isn't that the purpose of an affidavit? And doesn't that have powerful legal weight? Or no?
I don't know. But I would defer to Mr. Santiago. He's got the benefit of experience, whatever he thinks is the most effective way.
The affidavit is another letter. We get a lot of letters up there. And, you know, it gets in, it gets in a pile and I might get to it before I go to committee. But guess what? He gets up, he has his three minutes time, and I hear his case and they get to ask him questions right then and there.
I'm just worried about time, but I get it.
Well, he can, he can be there for the committee hearing.
Next committee hearing. The committee hearings function exactly like this body does. Public comment comes up, they get comment cards, and they get, they're given two, three minutes to speak on any.
Have you packed yet?
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Let's vote on it. There's another half, when we get done with this, there's something else I want to bring up in regards to what Troy did that I, I think it's, we have to be ready for any contingency. And if it passed, I want to hear from the sheriff now, and I want to, I would like, well, let's, let's go back to this, the motion on the, on the floor. Any other discussion on that, sending the letter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And then lastly, for me, what, the thing I hate most about this is we lose more local control, state preemption. This is not the way to conduct good business when we're forced into a corner and we got to scramble like this to, to get something done fast. But we do need to be prepared for whatever's going to happen. And since it's moving so fast, I, I think I would like for us, as a council, to reach out to the sheriff. And I would also like to know, be kept abreast of, not just me, but this council, of, you know, conversations that staff is having with, with the sheriff or the results of it. And I don't want to slow you down, but just to keep us abreast, because we're going to have to craft something in the, in the end. And concerns about costs, you know, I just, I just would like for us, this council to be kept abreast of that. What's the quickest way to hear from the sheriff?
Well, I can talk, call the sheriff tomorrow, but I mean, maybe even tonight, depending on when we get out of here. But hearing from the sheriff to this body would have to be the next meeting.
Okay. All right. That'll be too late, but we got to talk to him at some time. And this, again, this is, for me, this is not about the sheriff. It's about being prepared and about providing the best safety that we can. And I just, we don't know what he's, what his plans would be. So we can also, each of us as council members, I think we should, David will correct me if I'm wrong, we should all call our Volusia delegation and let them know that we have concerns. And, and we could also email the sheriff on our own and, and ask him to update us on what he sees coming down. All right. I'm going to, that's it for me. You have anything else, George? Michael Dyer?
Do you want to, do you want a motion so it'd be a, you know, a council invitation to the sheriff to come to your meetings, what I'm hearing? I know you, as the chair, could make the motion, but.
Yeah, I can't make a motion.
Do we need a motion to invite the sheriff to a meeting?
No, I just didn't want to be incorrect.
He can say no, so.
No, but it's an invitation to council, correct?
Yeah. Looks like there's consensus. Okay. Still invite him? Thank you.
One other, we spent a lot of time on that bill, but you've got another bill, the TDT bill. I'm not sure how far along that is, but that could have a direct financial impact on us because it was, they were targeting the part of the bed tax that pays for the Ocean Center. So, John, do you know how far along that is?
So that one's kind of playing around a little bit. So there was portions, discussions was that the Senate wasn't interested in that TDT bill. But there was also, and this is from, from conversations with FAC and our lobbying folks and other lobbying firms, is that, that the House may take portions of the TDT bill because they're focused on a visit Florida aspect of it, and they may use another vehicle to, to take certain aspects of the TDT bill, put it over. But the main goal, according to this scenario, was, was on visit Florida versus continuation of reallocating TDT funds. So, again, that was something that we'll find out. FAC is, is very, very aware of that situation. It was on our call yesterday. Took up a lot of time, so it's, it's one of those things. We're just waiting to see what legislature giveth and the legislature taketh away. So we'll figure out what they're giving us.
But it's not moving as fast as 1588? Or is it?
But, see, I would say that 1588 isn't, is poised to move quickly, but it hasn't been scheduled for hearings. So that's what I would look at. They can remove a committee reference on the House side, make it go through quicker. It's in its last stop in rules on the Senate side. So there's all sorts of things that they can do to make my comments here obsolete by tomorrow morning. So, again, they're very well poised to, to do some things for next week. But we don't know the answer to that until we start seeing committee assignments for the bills that are going to be heard. Because at this time of the year is defense and killing bills. I mean, that, that's the name of the game. You know, we started out with 1,600 bills, but really, we're talking about maybe 70 that are in play. You know, 200 that I'm watching, of that 200, maybe 70 are in play. So things, you know, get a little, little easier to monitor at this point in time. But, again, it's, David, Mr. Santiago, it's kill bills or defense and softening bills. And hopefully, you know, you have a committee chairman who decides not to hear a bill. Or they put it at the very end, and you don't get the committee time to, to vote on it because they do have time constraints, three hours for a committee hearing, or six hours, or whatever. But you, you don't go to six hours and one minute.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, anything else from you?
Yes, sir. Just to mention on Sun Rail, I know, a light topic. Yeah. Don't go away, John. Some of you, this last year, press coverage began covering Sun Rail's discussions to expand, kind of connect the convention center, Orange County Convention Center, to the airport. And they've called that the Sunshine Corridor. I know Mr. Brower, you and I have discussed this, and I thought I would bring it up. So last year, the county council expressed some concerns with some of our funding partners moving, taking some steps to seek federal funding to help fund the Sunshine Corridor. And ultimately, a resolution was adopted. The council gave the authority to the chair to vote in favor of a resolution that expressed support for studying the advancement of segments of the Sunshine Corridor. That resolution also acknowledged that those studies could provide additional information on costs, cost sharing, and grant opportunities. That was in September of last year. Since that time, we don't have that cost information. We don't have that information to advise this new council as to what the cost would look like to this county and other funding partners if the Sunshine Corridor would take place. Recently, there has been discussions at the staff level about a memorandum of understanding being approved by the Sun Rail Commission, Central Florida Commuter Rail Commission, that Mr. Brower sits on and is vice chair of, that would go further than the resolution that was previously approved. It goes as far as to say that it asks to formalize a relationship between the parties for the advancement of the Sunshine Corridor. So we've talked about it as a staff, and I've talked about Mr. Brower. My concern is us being asked, Mr. Brower being asked, as a member of the Commuter Rail Commission, to approve this MOU goes further than the resolution. I think conversations of the prior council were very clear that they didn't want to stand in a way of studies for the Sunshine Corridor, but they also wanted information and were not committing Volusia County to additional expenses that Sunshine Corridor would result in. So as your staff, we are getting this memorandum of understanding, and I realize that this is, this issue is hitting you cold, but I'm concerned about the timing. I can't speak for you, but as staff, I felt as, as your attorney could express reservations to our other funding partners and staff, that this MOU is a step beyond the resolution that was approved last year. And I would anticipate that Volusia County may have objections to committing or formalizing support for advancement of the Sunshine Corridor without you having the information that I know your prior council asked for. I did not want to do that without mentioning it to you. The, I can provide you different, additional information if you feel like, I just thought I should raise that this evening and see if you get input from you.
Yes. David, in just one second. I, I hope that the council would not put me in that position to have to support that because I think it, it really, it ignores the first document that we agreed to, to get information. It's not forthcoming, and this ratchets it up more, and I'm afraid it will be used to, to say, look, everybody's for this. Let's go ahead with it. And we don't know yet what the costs are. We don't know yet what our obligation is going to be, so. But that's, you know, the council has to decide what they, how they want me to represent them there. But I concur with you. I would rather not vote for that. David Santiago?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, if you're saying you're looking for direction to say, we're not progressing or signing off going forward until we get the data that was committed to us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It's simple for me. You've got my 100% support as an individual member, so I say, stay strong.
Okay. No motion, no second, but I see no opposition. So.
All right. Thank you. I get John will work on that letter this evening as well.
Well, can I, can I ask something here before we?
Yes, please.
That was a vote? I don't even know what that was. I just blacked out that I, no, I just, while we're on subject here, I just, I'm not a fan of Sun Rail. I think it's a big loss for the community. I know we got that on the West Side. That's the one thing that was given to us, but gladly trade it for some ballpark and football field or something. But is there a way out of Sun Rail? Long and short of it?
Short answer is no. That the, several councils ago, was 2010, John? It's late, I'm trying to remember.
2010 was the vote.
Yes. The council approved and entered into a contract. There is an exit timeframe, which isn't soon, but we're definitely contract, we're part of a contract, and there's obligations on us. There was some discussion that, because one of the obligations of DOT was to extend the system to Deland, and they had set a deadline to do that. What was it, John? 2015 approximately? They obviously did not make that. They were, they were late, and this council, not this county council, it wasn't you, but agreed to kind of cooperate in that and, and support expanding the system to Deland, but there were a lot of reservations expressed about that. One of the things I would say that, there's been a lot of discussion about the Sunshine Corridor, but I can tell you as your staff, what we're concerned about is the transition of the system to the local government funding partners, that's Sun Rail Commission, from FDOT. And what those funding up, and what those financial costs will look like for us. Because it's very, very clear, and I'm not saying this in a critical way, I just think it's a fact, DOT has made it very apparent, they want out. And they think it's time to hand the system over to us. So I guess a short answer to your question, there will, there, there may be disputes over how the contracts are implemented, but getting out at this point, I would say is not a viable option.
When did you say contractually we could get out?
2036.
Six, okay. So, I don't know where I heard this, but if they're wanting to extend the rail system down to MCO, then we have to agree on that, correct? I'm not here.
Yeah, we, we believe so. And that, and that is, when I mentioned that there could be other disputes in how these agreements are implemented, that would maybe, that potentially could be one of them. Because we believe that certain votes require unanimous approval of the Sun Rail Commission, others require majority approval. We feel expanding the system would require, in this case, Mr. Brower's vote and the affirmative on the Sun Rail Commission.
Okay. So if, it sounds like they're bent on extending Sun Rail to the airport in Orlando, correct?
Yeah. I mean, really, the, the Sunshine Corridor program, really, there's two parts to it. Expanding the system geographically to the airport and connecting the convention center, but also converting the system from a commuter system to a 24/7 system. So there's going to be increased capital costs if that happens, and operational costs more than today.
So if we leverage, and they need our vote to do that, right? To turn it 24/7 and to get it down to the Orlando Airport, correct?
We believe so. And I will say, it's, there's potential for dispute over that, but that, that is our good faith reading.
So if we play that card and say, we're not going to agree to the expansion or the extended times, let us out, do you think there's a viable chance we could get out?
Let the record reflect, Mr. Booker was shaking his head.
Well, in regards to the FTA funding.
He's nodding off one or the other.
No, but I think you're raising some good questions, Mr. Dempsey. And believe me, there are discussions we've had internally about, well, maybe not getting out entirely. You know, if there is going to be a negotiation, what are things that we can accomplish to that process if our interests are not fully aligned with some of our other funding partners that want to see the system expanded? I would say, Mr. Brower could speak to this better than I. I think there's been some cost concerns expressed also by some of the other Sun Rail commissioners as well. I don't think Volusia's been alone in that.
Well, I mean, we all know that Sun Rail is a huge losing venture. And starting, I guess, at the end of this year, we're looking at, I think the chart that you guys showed earlier was eight to $10 million that we're going to have to come up with to, basically, to fund Sun Rail. So if we're going to get out, it sounds like now's the time to try and get out. What I don't want to see happen is it seems like we're doubling down on our commitment to a losing venture because we're now talking about trail systems out to the Sun Rail station. We're allowing development to happen at the Sun Rail station. And if we're going to get out of this sooner, or, you know, or even by 2036 or someday, because it's such a losing venture, I mean, we're doing a disservice to those people as well. So I'd rather get out now while the getting's good than let all those people invest money into the stationary out there and then just to have us pull out because maybe it's not a $10 million venture to the county, maybe it's going to be 20 million. I don't think anybody really knows how much we're going to have to shell out once all this is on our lap and FDOT pulls out of.
Well, one thing's for sure, that the actual costs are way beyond the projections that were given to the council when they approved this originally, and all the funding partners for that matter. You know, I think the Sunshine Corridor, John, you correct me if you want to state it differently. I think the Sunshine Corridor discussion is in its very early stages, right? I think, but the reason why we mentioned the MOU to you is our concern that, and I think Mr. Brower hit it right on the head, it's like, you know, three or four years down the road, if we express concerns again about costs, I say, well, what do you mean? You passed a resolution and you signed this MOU, and what do you mean, you're not in support? And, and I feel that it is important, at least for the council, to express, and the, the county has had a long history of expressing its concerns on a number of issues on Sun Rail.
Because they have a station down at Sanford, so going from DeBarry to Sanford, not that big of a hike, and.
Well, you're, I mean, you're, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you're raising concerns.
What's your point?
I think there was a question from the attorney on guidance on the MOU is where this opened. And I think we gave guidance, we can beat this horse till tomorrow, which we can certainly agenda, agenda this.
I'll concede, I'll be quiet.
It's 10:00 PM, and I think he's gotten his direction, and we can have discussions separately.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to real, real quick, say thank you for your support. It means a lot to my staff. So thank you.
Thank you. It, Mr. Dyer, at some point, is that leftover? The question that he asked you and the, and that, I, I am, because I need the information on the Sun Rail Committee. And you and I can discuss this later and Laura, but he, he asked what I think was a legal question, that if we do the expansion and we don't vote for it because it costs us something, it changes from a commuter rail to a community rail. At that point, legally, I would think we could get out of it. So.
Yeah. We have definitely articulated our position that we believe it would require unanimous approval, and those kind of discussions could lead to an opening to have those discussions. We're just not in that form yet. But I hear you.
Right. I just didn't want to leave it.
Just a small sentence. The Federal Transit Administration will have a lot to say about, you know, getting out of it. Because they funded 50% of Phase 1, so their investment, the agreements were, were, come about in the 2036 came about because of the federal investment. So, you know, get out of it, just realize that the federal government has a stake in this, and, and they would have something to say about it.
They could buy us out.
You can print some money, that's for sure.
Okay. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
That's it for you? Okay. Move to council. Don Dempsey. Closing statements, anything you want to talk about?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was coming up for a vote of some sort. Okay. I'd like to bring back up item 17. That was Mr. Santiago's motion to approve the ECHO, I believe it was the ECHO Fund, the priority chart of the A.
Volusia Forever.
Volusia Forever, I'm sorry, guys. But I, I think it came up, and I don't know if this was omitted in error, or if it was purposely omitted, but my concern is that solar farms are considered ag in nature. And I just want to, I want to make sure that, or to see if we can vote on whether or not we want to just flat out say that fuller, solar farms, solar farms cannot be considered in agricultural use for Volusia Forever properties. That's got to be just stricken.
Are they considered agriculture?
The, I think you have two, I think you have two issues here, and we could talk about how we implement this, if that's will of council. I think the, Russ, my understanding of the discussion was that we got some direction on the solar farm issue when this came up. But there are, there are, there is a state law that gives some, is treating purposes of preemption of local government power, giving some farm rights under state law to somebody who wants to build a solar farm, which is different than your ECHO program. You know, because you define your own rules on that.
We're just saying for Florida forever, that solar farms cannot be.
Volusia, Volusia.
I'm sorry, Volusia.
Russ Brown, senior assistant county attorney, our recommendation would be that when we get these conservation easements or an ag easement, we can, as we do with all of them, articulate conditions that they can operate. Things are allowed, things are not allowed. So we can certainly articulate that into an easement that runs with the land, it gets recorded, comes up with a title commitment, and we're able to enforce that. So I don't think that runs afoul of any special exception given to solar farms or an ag exemption. We can do that. Can we make that the policy of the county? Yes, sir. We were already going to put, we thought we had direction. We were going to put that into our CEs and Ags moving forward. So you don't need a new motion and vote? I see consensus among the board unless there's otherwise stated.
It feels like he has it, yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Jake Johansson?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, this month is Autism Awareness Month. I'd like everybody to be aware of that. to be aware of that. Mr. Etheridge, I want, I heard you say that occasionally your staff gets conflicted by what we say. I may agree or disagree with laws, rules, ordinances that we have in place right now, but we can't solve the world's problems and do it my way in a moment's notice, so please don't ever let anything that comes out of my mouth confuse you as to what you should be doing. We have laws, we have guidance, we have existing policy. Whether I like it or not, I want you guys and the sheriff and staff to follow those existing policies. Development, water quality, safety on the beach. I might, I might give you an opinion, you might see something on social media, it doesn't mean the way you change the way you do business. I want you to enforce the law on the beach, even if it's me breaking it, and you know that. Last but not least, I owe, I owe staff and the committee for ECHO a West Side person. I am willing to nominate that person now or put it on the agenda for the next meeting, Chris, the next meeting? Will do. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Where are we? Troy Kent?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Wrecktonwald, do you know who, did everybody get one of these, and is this, you know who put this at my, at the dais here? The proposal to rename the Orange Avenue Courthouse Annex to Stevens.
This was put up by councilperson Robbins.
Okay. I never met Judge Henderson, but I've heard nothing but glowing, wonderful things about this man. I don't know if we have a policy in the county on naming parks, buildings, things like that, I don't know. I know that, you know, there were, there were some, there were some policy things that we wanted to get squared away in the city of Ormond, but I won't take his thunder if he wants to make that motion, because I was going to make it. I didn't know, I thought this was staff-generated and staff brought this out, but I, my motion would simply be to bring this back to us so that we could discuss it and vote on it, have his family hear and things like that, so I couldn't think of a more fitting person for this honor. And, you know, reading this background information about his six kids, I'm one of six kids, you know, and this is tough stuff. So, I'll leave that alone and let someone else handle that for the, for this evening. Counsel, I just wanted to say, we had some extremely positive items passed this evening for our Volusia County residents. Regrow the Loop, I want to thank Alan Burton again for committing $1,000 to our tree fund in the name of the incredible, late, great Southern Bell Sue Parkinson. Volusia County residents, get ready because you're going to have concerts again at the Ocean Center. I'm super excited about that. And for, for everybody out there, you don't have to be in District 4, but I told you all, I will do these meetings quarterly. The next, the next dialogue, excuse me, the next district dialogue for residents will be Monday, May 15th, at the Ormond Beach Library from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We will talk about anything you want to talk about pertaining to Volusia County. Have a great evening.
Danny Robbins.
Thanks, Chair. I'll make this as quick as possible. Back on April 24th, county attorney had sent out a memo to council on local government ordinance which regulates sex offenders, and I'd just like to move that staff be directed to return with a presentation to council, give direction on a draft ordinance involving the residency distance limits that were explained in that email, landlord obligations, and playgrounds. Make that motion.
Second.
Is there a second? There is a second from Mr. Santiago. And any other, any discussion? I need to put the, the main motion out on the floor again, because I didn't, I didn't know you were heading for a motion, so I didn't write it down.
No, it's okay, Chair, that we just direct staff to return with a presentation to council to get direction on a draft ordinance involving the residency distance limits for sexual offenders, landlord obligations, and playgrounds.
Okay. And you seconded?
I did.
David Santiago. Don Dempsey, for discussion?
Yes, if we could, I'd like to also have a map of, I believe the sheriff's office puts out a map of where people can live and where they cannot live. I'd like to see if, with this ordinance, if we could see how much that would restrict people's ability to find housing. You know, there's a lot of parks, there's a lot of bus stops, there's a lot of those places in the community, so I would just like to have a big overall picture of where people can live now versus where they can live after this proposed ordinance comes in.
And I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michael.
Mr. Dempsey, you raised a good question. We're actually, because we got this as a request for information, and we sent out the memo, we, we've actually asked your, it's actually maintained by your mapping staff, they call it GIS, but has that data already, we're running some of those scenarios precisely because of some of the concern you raise as to if you did expand beyond the state residency distance law, what impact would that be? And you've had some cities that have adopted some restrictions as well, so, no, it's a good question, we're definitely working on that.
Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Chair, I have another motion that we talked about. I want to move that staff be directed to return with additional information based on a possible county ordinance based on Arizona's stupid motorist law that would apply during emergency periods. I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Could you explain that one, that motorist law, again, real quick? I'm sorry.
So, on, on the surface, the stupid motorist law in Arizona identifies during periods of state of emergency monsoons, any of that stuff, sort of like we experience here, that if they or a motorist driver goes around barriers, cones, into a hazardous situation where common sense should apply, that we are allowed to, and if we have to send our guys in there, whether our first responders, whatever resources, tow trucks, that we are able to hold that motorist accountable and retain some of that money that it costs the taxpayer. And I believe there's about a $2,000, $2,500 threshold that's being used in several different states that we can apply to deter, and help people make better life decisions. So, yeah.
I'll second that.
That's an Arizona law?
Yeah.
How does it affect us?
Because of the flooding that we had.
The flooding, everything that we, you know, experienced during our hurricanes, flooded roads, barriers, and we can also kind of apply this, I think, on the water too, you know, down in Honeton Island, Stone Island, when people are going by in their wakes, increased fines and penalties if we have to send enforcement in there to, you know what I mean? So.
You did the second? Okay. All right, any other questions on that motion? Don Dempsey?
One quick question, are you saying just to make them pay a civil penalty for the cost of rescue, or are we talking about making this like a misdemeanor?
No.
Criminal conduct?
It would, it would be on the civil side, Don, but that would be part of the presentation. I'm just reading on the surface that, hey, hell, we can possibly apply this here, but this is just to bring back some more information to see how we can apply it, or if we can, we may just ax it, you know, if the council doesn't decide to go that way.
Yeah, if I could, it's not making the ordinance, it's merely bringing back the information for us to discuss it.
Yeah.
If we were looking down that avenue of just civil liability, or are we looking at?
Civil.
Either or, just civil.
Okay, all in favor of sending that to staff? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven to zero. And I recently got approached, there's a group of about, I'd say, 40 to 50 fishing guides down in southeast Volusia, and we have something in Volusia County up and down our coastline called the vessel exclusion zone, and pretty much in a nutshell, what they're experiencing down there with the lagoon, whether it's on the environmental side and the declining state of that lagoon over the last few years, the fishing regulations, and the pressure that it, that it does receive, they approached me seeing if we can help them out and expand their business model for, for several reasons, to take the pressure off the lagoon, but allow these guys, because currently, right now, they can't fish close to the surf in that exclusion zone, and right now it's at 1,500 feet. They're looking to bring that down below half that so they can get out of the lagoon and target other species along the beach. It's kind of, I shouldn't say complicated on the surface, but it is a little bit involved, there's some public safety involved, but like state statute has a threshold of 300 feet as their safety point, ours is 1,500. Can we help them out because it's affecting their business? But what I'm looking to do is, once again, ask staff to bring back some additional information, see if we can help these folks out, if there's a way, we can issue a special permit for, for maybe some of these licensed U.S. Coast Guard, you know, fishing guides, or adopt a shorter distance like we did for the advertising boat that we approved, I think it was at like 750. But, and I'll make that, that motion to get back additional information. I want to stress, my number one priority is, is looking at the bill that we all discussed first. This stuff can come after, this is definitely not up there with that, but I do want to get information for these folks, see if we can help them out.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was by Danny Robbins, second by David Santiago, bringing back information to help the fishing guides. Don, is that leftover?
No, yeah, it was.
Any, any questions on, on this request for information from staff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
And Chair, I'm going to try to wrap this up, just to echo what Mr. Kent had, had said, I'd pass this information out, I think Judge Henderson is more than worthy, and his family's more than worthy of this, and I'll, I'll make a motion to look at the feasibility of naming the, the annex on Orange Avenue after Stephen Henderson Memorial Courthouse Annex, and I know there's also been talks in the future of possibly demolishing that building. In the event that that happens, even though we don't have the money for it at this time, I'd like that name to carry, most likely go over to the Foxman Building if there's ever a wing or something that Volusia County is involved in, I would like that name to be part of this county forever.
I'd second that.
Okay. I like that addition to it because there's, we have no idea what's going to happen with that, with that building, so if we're going to do it, it'd be a shame to do it for a few years, and you made that in the form of a motion? And you seconded? I'm out of space. Okay, any questions on that request? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And to close it up, I just want to give some accolades here. Last year, we implemented subsistence fees and booking fees to collection and going after that with, with our inmates in about five months. If council looks, Kevin sends out a tracking sheet for council, one about, I want to say three tracking sheets ago, he had put some, some kind of teaser numbers out there. Booking fees, I've already brought in 131,509, and subsistence fees, 234,507, and I just want to say thank you, good job for that. I know it's going to free up some money, and if you compound it, you're probably going to close to a million bucks. Now, with that being said, when we get through a lot of this stuff, one of the promises that I made to come out of this program when I initially proposed it was to see how and where we could help out our correctional staff in terms of bonuses, retention, in hiring, in recruiting, I think we can all agree they're more than deserving of it and probably need it the most, but as long as we can get some consideration with that, I know that was a priority last council, I'd like to also carry that over when the time permits, because this policy was for them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Robbins, thank you for that. Appreciate that, that's, that's awesome. First off, with relation to the jail, I know we had talked some time ago about the expansion of our MMA Farm thing, we're still working on that out here, we had talked about the embroidery issue. Several doors have opened since then, we're now talking with individuals who are approaching us, or me, about expansion of those programs to possibly teaching different trades as part of a reentry type program. There's a lot of companies out there that regardless of the inmate's criminal history, that they're willing to hire them, and that's good for us, that's, you know, hopefully slows down some of that recidivism that we, we see so much of it in every county. So, we're going to continue to work on that, and I'll keep everybody posted as that proceeds. Also, on another note, one of the other things that I was big on, as well as everybody, was the, not just the sport of, but the sustainability of small businesses within our area. I had the opportunity to visit several during my campaign and listen to some of their concerns. I wanted to try to find out ways that we could help them, I mean, we offer a lot of different programs, but to try to be innovative, and if anybody out there has ideas to try to do that, please feel free to, to reach out. One of the things that we're going to do is on our social media platform is kind of showcase the small businesses within District 2, and we've had a couple that are identified, and I know this is nothing, this is just kind of big for me, so, look forward to that, that we'll, I don't know how we're going to take that and go with it, but I think it's important to, you know, that's something that the county can do, or at least a county representative can do, to help support and kind of promote small businesses. A lot of them don't have the affordability to do advertising and things of that nature, they use social media, I'm just going to take it that one step further, but thank you very much, and that's all I got.
Thank you, David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mike Dyer, did I hear you earlier today say constitutional officers, if they try to do a satellite office, that it requires a resolution passing from this county council?
Yeah, I think, or some type of approval at least, with the exception of the state functions that your tax collector would perform, because that's under Department of Revenue, but if it's a county function, yeah.
Thank you. And then, I think there was a scheduling error, I think, are we supposed to have the night meetings on the second meeting of the month? Sure. I said that as a funny, to kind of close out, but I know I missed the last meeting when we first changed our hours. I think today is a demonstration that maybe we shouldn't have gone to 10:00 AM, and we should have went the opposite way. I don't know how this council feels, but we went from 9:30, I think, to 10:00 AM. I think we should go from 10:00 AM to 9:00 AM, because we're obviously doing a lot of business. I don't know how you all feel, but I think we should go to 9:00 AM starts on the first meetings of the month. I don't know if that, what that requires, but I think today's a clear example that we should have went that way for the first meetings of the month. Did I, I just got a second, I think you whispered it, though. Oh, and a second, I think, I think the jury's still out on the night one, I still think it's worthy to continue it, but I think the, the day one, at a minimum, we should go earlier. If I have consensus on that, you need a motion? What do you need?
If we're going to change the established time, I think we needed a motion and a second and a, and a vote.
I move to adjust the first meeting of every month to 9:00 AM start.
Second. The main motion is to adjust the time for the first meeting of the month to 9:00 AM. That was seconded by Jake? That was seconded by, uh, Jake. Uh, and for discussion, Troy Kent?
So any, any changes I think that we're going to make at this point? I think we need to have it on the agenda. We should open it up for our, our residents. They know it's coming. Let them weigh in on it. You don't like that. I can see. Yeah. You don't, you don't like that. But, uh, you know, I mean, we, we haven't even, we haven't even done a year of this. You know, we've done a couple of months and 10:30 has got us worried?
No, if I may, I think the intent, if I recall, was to have more public participation. Well, it's clear that we have one regular here. I think everybody else is staff or media, right? So I think the decision is, is out that it doesn't necessarily work in that per, I'm okay with the evening meetings, but I don't think it made sense to go back on the first meeting of the month because more people could participate earlier than 10:30. So we would probably be done by 9:30 today. And maybe there was more people here. That, that's all it is. I, I don't think people are going to come back to us and say, no, we want that extra hour, uh, you know, to come in later. I, I just don't see that as an argument, but.
Yeah. My, my, my thought on it is, I'm sorry you weren't here. I wish you were. That's why you got so many committee appointments. But we talked about this. We had that discussion and we're now three, three months going into our fourth month. And really the first month, we didn't even do it because they already advertised the first two meetings. So the first meeting and then the second meeting that we had, it didn't even, it didn't even take place there. So I'm, I'm fine with keeping it exactly the way that, that we agreed to. Um, and if we're going to change it, I think that we should put it on the agenda and we should change it so that people know it's on the agenda and have that discussion then, not doing it at 10:32, 12 hours and 32 minutes into this meeting. Just, just my thought.
Jake Johansson?
That was ironic that we're not going to discuss it because it's 10:32. However, however, because there's no public here. However, I firmly believe that, that administratively, when we gain consensus, that's one thing, but, um, I think any vote that, that the public is involved in deserves to be put on agenda. Um, I came from a place where stuff like this happened and people would like, I was going to say something, but I didn't know you were going to vote on that. So I'm all for putting it on the agenda and I am a firm yes to starting earlier and being more succinct.
Thank you. Um, I think it's, I think, I think it's premature. We just started this and I don't want the public to think, man, these guys are jerking this all over the place. I think we should give it some time and where we need to work is what Mr. Johansson just said and being more succinct perhaps, but a half, so we would have got out at 10 o'clock since 10:33. Of course, I haven't done my comments yet, so it might be 11:33. Um, so I, I'm good for, uh, staying where, where we are and, um, uh, anyway.
Troy Kent?
Yeah, thank you again, Chairman. And I agree with you on that. And I'll just say this. So I think we have become more succinct, believe it or not. I actually like the 10-minute rule that we've given ourselves. I know, you know, I had a couple of hot items on the agenda. Mr. Robbins has some items he wants to put on the agenda. I suspect he'll probably talk more on those because he's brought them up like I did with mine. But I'm at home timing myself because I don't want to disappoint you gentlemen and I want to follow our rules. I take that stuff seriously. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we have major issues. I mean, not, you know, national, but we have some pretty big issues that we're dealing with. And this team, George's team, has 24 times for us to chew through 1.1 billion dollars. That's our budget and we're going to spend that amount throughout the year. We have 24 meetings. So, you know, we, I think we are being more succinct. I just think this is a huge animal. This is a billion-dollar animal and we're doing great work for over a half a million people. And with that, you know, listen, I had to stand up and stretch, you know? My backside doesn't like sitting here this long. This is what I signed up for, you know? This is part of it. So that's where I am. I'm, I'm with you, Chairman. It's, it's too early.
I'll just wrap up with this, Mr. Chair.
Is, okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I think we are getting succinct. It's, I'm just laughing because this billion-dollar animal can be dealt with starting at 9:00 AM also. I don't know if there's anything that restricts us or, or interferes from a staff perspective, from a public participant's participation perspective. No one is advocating to stop that. You know, for years, this county council has done it earlier. So, um, if we want to deal with it in the next agenda, I'm okay with that. I think it's, uh, today was a proof test that there's no real reason to move it to 10:00 AM because we're still here. So that's, I don't want to drag us on a little longer.
Okay. We still have the motion on the floor and a second.
I have the votes. I'll take it.
And just to make, be sure what we're voting on, your motion was to vote to change it tonight, right?
Yeah, to change it right now. Motion needs to be placed to change it.
Okay. All in favor, uh,
I just think you should.
Good. Call the roll, please. Carissa?
Mr. Dempsey?
Yes. Jake Johansson seconded.
I had to get it on the table.
He wanted to discuss it.
Oh, I thought he wanted to put it on the agenda for next time to give the public.
I seconded the motion. Then I had, I, I can second the motion and then kind of oppose it. So that's what I did. I just wanted to get it for discussion.
Yes.
A yes or no vote?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
No.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
No. Wow, that surprises me. Alright, so we're going to tell the public that we, they'll have to re-notify. Yeah, give this a month. Okay. Yeah. What an interesting day. I, um, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, since it's 10:38, I can see that I'm probably, since I, I'm always last, I'll never get to talk about the things I want to talk about because I'll always feel guilty that we're going to, too long. The, uh, and really everything I want to discuss, we, we did on the, um, on the Senate Bill 1588 and House Bill 1595. Um, I was going to say that Troy, that it was interesting to me, the last several meetings, that it seems like the things that we spend so much time on and are talking about the most. And today, we had robust debate and I think it was good. I don't know if we're getting more succinct, but we are, there is a respect for one another and we change each other's minds sometimes. But it's interesting to me that the things that we're spending that much time on are the things that the public is showing up for. We're dealing with the things that local government touches, uh, the community, uh, more than federal government. They can screw, well, never mind. I'm not going there, but, so I'm, I'm happy about that. I'm happy that we're discussing things and really spending the time on it to, uh, discuss what the public wants us to discuss, the things that affects their lives. So I appreciate the time that you all put in. We missed, uh, Jake the timer today, although we were moving, we were moving faster before Jake got here. Sorry, but, alright, and with, with that, I better adjourn the meeting.